Council meeting of May 17th, 2017 to order. If you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic of America, one nation, under power, in the best of all liberties and in the best of all hands.
And please let the record note that all council members are present with the exception of Ms. Headall this evening. Without objection, the minutes of the meeting of May 8th will stand approved. And with that, we'll move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybine?
Thanks. So there's a change to the committee schedule that's on your desk tonight. The Landis and Planning Committee, so we had a committee of the whole set from eight until nine in the morning, and that committee meeting has been canceled. So Wednesday, the 17th, we're going to start off the day at 9:05 in the morning and go to 10:05 with Landis and Planning. Public Works Committee will be from 10:10 to 10:55. That's a change from what's on your schedule. That's Public Works from 10:10 in the morning until 10:55, followed by Parks and Conservation, which meets from 11 to 11:30. Landis and Planning will meet from 12:15 to 1:45, and Administration and Finance Committee will meet from 1:50 in the afternoon to 4:50. And all of those meetings are being held right here in City Council chambers at 140 West Pine.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any changes to that schedule? Ms. Kears?
You said that Public Works ends at 11:30. Is that accurate?
No. Public Works meets from 10:10 in the morning to 10:55.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening.
Mayor Ingin, members of the council. My name is Alan McCormick with Garland, Loton Robinson, and I appear before you this evening on behalf of Mercantile LLC. We're the owners and developers of the Mercantile site. I want to provide you with a brief statement of what occurred at the site today because I suspect a number of you have some questions about what happened. Members of our team have been in contact with Don Veru, Ms. Bentley, who is our liaison between the council and development team, working with us on the project, and with some others at the city to explain the situation. As you've no doubt witnessed, the deconstruction of this building and the mercantile has been a fascinating and challenging process. Despite those challenges, the result has been a very successful endeavor. It's resulted in far, the recovery of far more timbers, wood, historic artifacts, and other similar items than anybody could have dreamed possible. And you saw some of that in the news recently with the timbers going on sale at Home Resource, the brick giveaway that occurred on Sunday with the ice cream, and the general festivities that occurred with that. A small mishap occurred today when the east wall of the pharmacy collapsed. During the deconstruction process, the contractors created a physical separation between the pharmacy building and the rest of the building as a whole. The contractors were working near that east wall and this area of separation between the two buildings this morning to remove the final part of that adjacent building when the wall collapsed. Now, this wall was always intended to be removed. It was intended to be removed in order to allow work to be done on the pharmacy and ultimately to better integrate that building and its facades into the rest of the structure when the hotel portion of it gets built. As a precaution, when this happened, of course, they didn't expect that the wall would be removed quite in this fashion. It was always intended to be removed, but maybe not quite so quickly. And as a precaution, the contractors alerted the police and the fire and secured the site while they could inspect the building. There were no injuries, and there was no property damage, and we're very fortunate for that. While the photos you may have seen look pretty dramatic, the damage to the building extends only approximately three to four feet into the structure itself. The trusses in this location have been cut in the past to accommodate a chimney that extended up through the roof, and the damage extends no further than that portion of the trusses that were, that had been cut. The remaining portion, the remaining portion of the building does remain intact. There was no deconstruction work being conducted on the pharmacy building. Plans called for that east wall to be removed soon to allow crews to get the mechanical equipment into the building to add the shoring that's needed to protect the north and the west walls during the future work on the building. In fact, that team was on the ground this morning in anticipation of having that kind of access when that wall collapsed. Beginning this afternoon, shoring was being added to the exterior of the building to provide additional rigidity as a precaution. An inspection of the building reveals that no other parts of the building moved when that wall collapsed. The contractors expect to use mechanical lifts to remove the damaged joists from the building, and then, after which, the team will begin, proceed to do the rest of the shoring that they intended to do to protect those north and those west walls. We apologize for the excitement, and we apologize certainly to the citizens of Missoula for the inconvenience that closing down portions of Higgins caused today. We do thank the city. We thank the fire department and the police department for their swift response and their assistance. We promise, as we're doing tonight, to keep in close contact with you.
Thank you, Mr. McCourt. Any other general public comment this evening?
Candy Matthew Jenkins, continuing reading "The Soviet Art of Brainwashing: Psycho-Politics, The Art of Mental Healing," as read in the, to the record, Congressional Record on American Activities Between the Years of 1936 and 1939. Speaking of electric shock, the sentence before this, "This highly scientific and intensely workable mechanism cannot be overestimated in the practice of psycho-politics. Drugging the individual produces an artificial exhaustion, and if he is drugged, or shocked, or beaten, and given a string of commands, his loyalties can be definitely rearranged." This is PTH, or pain killing, pain drug hypnosis. The psycho-political operative is training, in training, should be thoroughly versed in the subject of hypnotism and post-hypnotic suggestion. He should pay particular attention to the forgetter mechanism as aspect of hypnotism, which is to say implantation in the unconscious mind. He should note particularly that the person given a command in a hypnotic state of mind and then told when, told when, still in that condition to forget it, will execute it on a stimulus-response signal in the environment after he has awakened from his hypnotic trance. Having mastered these details fully, he should be, should, by practicing upon criminals and prisoners or inmates available to him, produce the hypnotic trance by drugs, drive home post-hypnotic suggestions by pain administered to the drug person. He should then study the reactions of the person when awakened. He should, and should give him the stimulus-response signal, which would throw into actions the commands given while the subject was in the drug state of duress.
Any other general public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Items on that agenda were approved unanimously in council committees, and we save a little time on Monday evenings by considering these items all together. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items aloud, so those in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and we'll take comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Raybine?
Thanks. Tonight's consent agenda has five items. The first is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable in the amount of $495,540.28 for checks that are dated May 16th, 2017. That's tomorrow. Number two is to approve water claims in the amount of $104,800.66 for checks dated May 16th, 2017. Number three is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Whitney Kemble to fill a vacated term on the Tourism Business Improvement District Board, beginning immediately and ending on December 1st, 2017. Number four is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign Appendix C Addendum II to the fiscal year 2017 State Special Project Agreement with the Montana Department of Transportation, affectionately known as MDT, for the city's street maintenance division to commit, complete, a mill and paving overlay project beginning on the south end of the Orange Street Bridge to Sixth Street. And finally, number five is to approve the inter-local agreement for the maintenance and management of Fort Missoula Regional Park between the city of Missoula and Missoula County for January 1st, 2017 to December 31st of 2017.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Pardon me, any questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, anyone in the audience care to comment? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Bentley. Bentley votes yes. Kears. Kears votes yes. DeBari. DeBari votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Marler. Marler votes yes. Sweeney. Sweeney votes yes. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. And Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? That's eleven eyes and one absent.
And the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to comments from city staff agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum, and we do have a Riverfront Neighborhood Council meeting report this evening. Ms. Arnison?
We had a meeting on Monday, May 8th, at Free Cycles, and we have some exciting developments in our neighborhood. There's a new school being built in the Willard School. We talked about that, and we're invited to join the Rose Park neighborhood in participating and some discussions with that. We organized a neighborhood cleanup day for, I believe, Saturday, June 10th. Anyone's welcome to participate. We're excited that Phase 3 of the mural on the Branch Line Trail, when you bike down the trail, you see there's two phases of a mural. Phase 3 is going to be happening very soon. And then, we were appreciative of some city staff that came and talked to us. The forester, Chris Boza, answered questions, and that was really great. And then Ben Weiss and Gwen came by to talk about the Fifth and Sixth Street study, and Ben is just really great. Everybody from our neighborhood wanted to call him out for doing a great job because he got cussed at by a member of the public at our meeting and handled it with a lot of class. So, in fact, I didn't witness it, and I witnessed nothing, but everybody said that he handled it with a lot of class. And then we did have an action item. We passed a motion that we wanted to let you guys know that we want you to vote yes for a $40,000 budget item for a study of traffic safety for the Higgins Street area between Broadway and Brooks, because the state is going to do a major rehab of the bridge, and it's the perfect time to talk about that whole corridor, so we can take advantage of that project in the best way possible. And we also are concerned about the flow of vehicles, bikes, and pedestrians. We learned that one in five people crossing the bridge are doing so not in a car, and so that's really important. And what are we going to do on both sides of the bridge as those people get on and off on their bikes and strollers and whatnot? So that's the idea of the study. And we also asked in our motion to support the study that the study look at the Highway 12 designation along Brook Street, whether that can factor into any fixes that would make that corridor better for people on foot, or on bike, or in car, who are not necessarily traveling Highway 12, but just are in the city, but also to be able to get people on Highway 12 through there. So, thank you.
Ms. Arnison, may I ask you to identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm Britt Arnison. I'm a Riverfront Neighborhood resident and member of the leadership team.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to our public hearing this evening. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for hearing community comment in a formal way on a variety of issues, and following a staff report on each of these items, the council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing, unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. We have one public hearing this evening on an ordinance modifying Historic Preservation Commission membership and quorum requirements, and Ms. Gress is providing our staff report this evening.
Yes, good evening. For the record, I am Jen Gress, and again, tonight's hearing will cover the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance that establish membership for the Historic Preservation So this is a city-initiated ordinance amendment. The primary purposes of updating the ordinance are to reduce the commission's size for optimum efficiency. We're encouraging participation through simplifying membership requirements and increasing at-large representations. These amendments also clarify how the two alternates will participate in commission businesses and clarify the number of members needed for a quorum. All the proposed amendments comply with Section 2085-040G review criteria. The HPC currently consists of 13 members, 11 regular members and two alternates. This is the largest board managed by the city and currently includes representatives from five specific regions. The commission also includes one at-large member, three professional members, one member each from the Design Review Board and the Missoula Redevelopment Agency, as well as two alternates. Proposed amendments to the Historic Preservation Commission membership include reducing the membership from 13 members to a nine-member board, seven regular members, and two alternates. This is more in keeping with board sizes of other commissions and boards managed by the city and is consistent with studies regarding optimal board sizes. The proposed makeup of the board consists of the downtown representative, three at-large members, the three professional members required by the certified local government, and will continue to require two alternate members. The first proposed amendment to the ordinance will remove the geographic region designations with the exception of the downtown representative. Requiring membership from five different regions of the city constrains recruitment where otherwise an applicant might be well-suited, and the downtown representative is maintained because the downtown area has the most historical buildings and is a part of, a large part of Missoula's identity. The proposal also increases the number of at-large positions from one to three, and these are amendments found in subsections B1 and B2. So this is a map showing the proposed downtown region, and the area remains the same with the addition of the extended downtown historic district, which was west of Orange Street, which would be over in this area here. Multiple discussions occurred regarding the inclusion of a member on the commission with law experience, or expertise, excuse me, which resulted in the above changes suggested by the Historic Preservation Commission. So these changes included adding preservation law and historic preservation to the list of required professional experience, recognizing the benefit of additional expertise in these disciplines. The HPC also suggested continuing the discussion of a law expert in the next phase of preservation permit procedure cleanup, which our office is committed to, to working on. Subsections B4 and B5 remove the Design Review Board and Missoula Redevelopment Agency appointments. The MRA requested that the city clerk remove their representative from the commission when the term expired in December of 2016, and the Design Review Board hasn't had a member present on the commission since 2013. The planning board held their public hearing April 4th and recommended city council approve the proposed changes with one suggestion to subsection B4. This language addresses an alternate's responsibilities. And a member pointed out that the language in subsection B4C was not actually a circumstance, and so staff agreed and amended the structure of paragraph B4 to include subsection C with no content change, and so that change is shown here in blue. The amendment to subsection E voting clarifies that four members are required for there to be a quorum. And in addition to the Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Board comments noted previously, our office received responses of no comment from the Parks and Recreation Department and the Housing and Community Development Office. So with that, staff recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance amending the Historic Preservation Commission membership and voting requirements. And that concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Gress. With that, I will open the public hearing on the proposed changes to the Historic Preservation Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council? Mr. DeBari?
Just wanted to ask two clarifying questions. Jen, you mentioned that there was one downtown representative, and I believe that that representative can either work or live downtown. Is that correct?
Correct.
There's not a residency requirement?
Correct.
And then the second somewhat related question is that I believe we are still advertising for alternate number-two position on the HPC. Is that correct?
I don't know that for sure.
Yes. This is Marty Raybine, the city clerk. And we are advertising, so if anybody's interested, the application form is online.
Perfect.
Further questions? Ms. Marler?
Do these changes affect anyone currently sitting on the board? Will anyone have to leave the board?
I don't believe anybody's going to be requested to leave, no.
Okay. How many people are currently on the board? I mean, actually, I know that there are 13 seats, but are they all full?
No, I think there's, is there?
Yeah, because we're...
Marty, are there two vacancies right now?
I think there's only one vacancy, and that is the alternate position. And the rest of the board members, so the reduction in the size of the board has been accomplished through attrition on the board, not because we need to remove anybody. And we do have one slot open currently, so...
Thanks for clarifying.
Further questions? All right, seeing none, Mr. DeBari?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending Title 20, Missoula Municipal Code, the city's zoning ordinance pertaining to the Historic Preservation Commission, removing geographic requirements for some appointees, reducing the total number of board members, and clarifying the quorum requirement by amending Sections 20.90.030B membership and E voting. May I speak to that?
Mr. DeBari?
I am in support of this motion, and I just wanted to thank all of the work that went into this from staff and from Ms. Jones. As Ms. Raybine mentioned, the work associated with discussing membership with the MRA and the Design Review Board and with terms expiring, there was no need to adjust the total number of membership. In fact, we've been in the process and over the last few months of appointing people to the HPC to fill vacant positions, and as we mentioned, the alternate-two position is still available, so I'll be supporting this motion.
The motion's in order. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to add that this is a result of, first of all, staff doing a lot of research on how to make an effective, efficient board, and then, secondly, trying to take lessons learned from the Merk from last summer and how to make a high-functioning board. And then, third, there was a lot of input from the Historic Preservation Commission on issues, so I feel like we did a very comprehensive job of trying to pull all of that information together to go forward. So, thanks, Jen.
Further discussion? Ms. Bentley?
I wanted to just thank Gwen for her work on this and continued work on the Historic Preservation Ordinance that I know will see coming before us this summer or fall. Yeah, thanks.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the amendments to the Historic Preservation section of Title 20, our zoning ordinance, Bentley, Bentley votes yes. Kears. Kears votes yes. DeBari. DeBari votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Marler. Marler votes yes. Sweeney. Sweeney votes yes. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes. And Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? That is eleven eyes and one absent.
And the ordinance is approved. We don't have any more public hearings this evening. We'll move on to communications from the mayor. I'd like to welcome PAC 4911, all the way from Lewis and Clark School this evening. We've been on our best behavior for you tonight, so it's nice to see you. Thanks for coming down. Wanted to also note that if you ever have a doubt about the efficacy of your public safety staff, police and fire were thoughtful and swift and very interested in public safety this morning as issues around mercantile deconstruction arose. We did our best to make sure that we could get Higgins Avenue open as quickly as possible, but in an abundance of caution, we closed it, and those folks were all over it, so I want to thank them in addition to the folks who were thanked before. And finally, I just wanted to note the passing of Chris Walters Skirchen. Chris was a colleague at the Missoulian when I was there years ago, and he was nothing short of amazing. Chris had a shocking memory and could remind us all, as Sherry will remember, when our birthdays were, even if we didn't want to know. He was, despite a lot of challenges, always sunny and a joy to be around, and he will be missed. We'll begin general comments from council members this evening with Mr. Von Losberg and Mr. DeBari?
Just a couple of items. I'd also like to extend my thanks to Don Veru for coming in on his day off to attend to the matters surrounding the pharmacy building and appreciate his efforts in putting out a thoughtful and clarifying email later, or late this afternoon about the conditions that are happening over there. Also, I'd like to thank Boy Scouts for coming. You're my home elementary school, so appreciate seeing you here, and just wanted to wish a friend of ours, Brian Sharkey, a speedy recovery.
Ms. Marler? Ms. Armstrong?
Please come out and support our athletes this week at Special Olympics. It's the Summer Games, and they're at various venues around, around town, and they would love for everyone to come out and cheer for them.
Mr. Wilkins?
I'd like to say something about Chris, too. My son was in the Mavs, and I was up there announcing, and Chris would be beside me. He could tell you every kid's name. He could tell you every kid's stats. He was just, I couldn't believe how he could remember all those things when I couldn't even remember my middle name, so I regret his passing. Also, Cub Scouts, I'd like to welcome you. I also was a PAC leader at Lewis and Clark School in Cub Scouts years ago, so I'm glad the tradition keeps going. I appreciate that. And then also, I would like you all to please join us, the members of the Missoula Police Department, at the 17th Annual Memorial Ceremony, as we pay tribute to our fallen officers in an evening of remembrance and celebration. And that'll happen at May 18th, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. to 8:15 p.m. at the Missoula Memorial Rose Garden. So I hope we see you there, see some council people there. I have not missed one in... I have not missed one in 12 years, I guess. Might have missed one. Anyway, thank you.
Mr. Nugent? Just thought I'd throw that out there. Ms. Kears? No, I don't. Mr. Hess? Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to say congratulations to the Hellgate and Sentinel tennis teams, who I think each team qualified between 11 and 12 kids to go to state up in Kalispell this next week, so good luck. It is so much fun watching them play tennis, and good luck to my daughter, who will be playing doubles for Hellgate.
Ms. West? Ms. Bentley?
So, my day job, I work at the fairgrounds, and I want to just announce some events that are happening this weekend. In addition to elections, Maggot Fest will be in the Lama Barn, and an auto auction will be in the outdoor pavilion, and on Sunday, my favorite, the high school rodeo will be at the fairgrounds. So, never a dull moment at the Missoula County Fairgrounds.
Ms. Sweeney?
Thank you. I wanted to acknowledge, we received an email regarding the flags being at half-staff, and I believe that's regarding what John had said earlier, to honor our Peace Officer's Memorial Day and also its Police Week. So the ceremony will be on Thursday this week. And then I wanted to offer congratulations to two professors at the university. They're both native professors who today were, received, granted, achieved tenure, Dr. Ted Van Alst in Native American Studies, and Professor Jason Begay in Journalism. Thank you. Muchas gracias.
We don't have any committee reports, nor do we have any new business. Are there any additional items to be referred this evening? Seeing none of those, I should have this memorized by now, shouldn't I? Any miscellaneous communications, petitions, reports, or announcements? Anything regarding the administratively-approved agreement report? Seeing none of that, we will be adjourned. Thank you, folks, for your service.